Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Let me call to order this mayor commission work session. Today is Monday, October 24th, 2022, and the time is 10:02. So we will get started with item, we could do item number one.
Yes.
Madam City Administrator, which is a quiet zone update. And this was requested by Commissioner Ward. So Commissioner Ward, if you want to tee up the nature of your inquiry and we'll get started.
Yes, thank you. I had just been getting a lot of questions from residents in my district about making sure that we as a city were on target to continue on our quiet zones. And I had Kim come speak actually to the community and thought that it would be beneficial for the rest of the commission to learn about it. And I think it's also timely, given some of the additional safety measures that she also discussed and the recent tragedy. And so, thank you for joining.
Good morning, Kim Delaney from Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council. So thanks for the chance to join you this morning to talk a little bit about quiet zones. The Regional Planning Council is available to local governments through an agreement we have with the Palm Beach TPA. So we're essentially an extension of your staff and an extension of the TPA staff to help with quiet zones and kind of train-related matters, if you will. So this morning is just a brief presentation, as Commissioner mentioned, to give kind of an overview of where we are with respect to quiet zones. And then your staff is going to follow my presentation with the details as to specific projects that are being pursued through grant funding and other sources in the city. And so I'll just kind of jump forward. For those of you who just don't have the, kind of like the set of definitions and the semantics, if you will, related to quiet zones, I always try to include a slide just to give a little bit of the backstory. And so, quiet zones are regulated through the Code of Federal Regulations. It's, if you're very sleepy, CFR 222 is a fairly lengthy section of federal code. And that describes what quiet zones are, how they can be established, and what the purpose is. For our purposes in Palm Beach County, the quiet zone cannot be less than a half mile in length. At this point, all the municipalities along the FEC corridor intend to establish quiet zones that would be the length of their municipality. With quiet zones being established, what that means is train horns are not routinely sounded. So federal regulations also dictates how often the horns are supposed to sound. So residents in the city, especially north of 23rd at this, or 15th Street at this point, are very familiar with one short, two long, and one short train horn. And that's actually set in federal code. When you have a quiet zone in place, what that means is the engineer is directed not to sound the horn routinely anymore. So of course, if there's an obstruction, if there's, you know, God forbid, a person on the track or a car on the track, the engineer is going to blow the horn. And we want the engineer to blow the horn, you know, in those instances. So it doesn't mean that a corridor is quiet for the rest of time when a quiet zone's established. And I like to make that distinction because sometimes, you know, residents raise that issue, geez, I heard the horn the other night. Don't we have a quiet zone? Well, there was a decision made by the engineer that he or she needed to sound the horn. The quiet zones can't be established by a railroad. They can only be established by a public authority that controls the grade crossings that cross. So West Palm Beach, of course, in this instance, is the public authority. And in Palm Beach County, on the FEC corridor, all of the entities establishing quiet zones are your municipalities. And so, in the establishment process, many of you may be already familiar with the process that's underway. But with respect to process, again, as set forth in the Code of Federal Regulations, the public authority initiates the process, conducts a feasibility assessment with the FRA or the Federal Railroad Administration staff. They also conduct a diagnostic review to go out and look at the grade crossing, kind of look and see what the conditions are like, what is the infrastructure that's there today, what's the infrastructure that's going to be installed? I think all your infrastructure is installed at this point. And coordinate that assessment and diagnostics with the railroad and with FDOT. The local government then determines a quiet zone risk index. The city's quiet zone from 15th Street North doesn't require, I believe, use of the quiet zone calculator because there are what are called supplemental safety measures, or SSMs, at each of the grade crossings. And then there are two formal steps. The first is filing what's called a notice of intent. We're in planning, so we'll call that an NOI because everything has an acronym. So filing the NOI then goes out. There's a, I think, a 60-day comment period. And then we kind of wait until the railroad finishes all of its work. The FRA comes down and certifies the corridor. And then after the, all of that certification is done, the city would take the next step, which is the notice of establishment, or the NOE. So those are the two points in time, and the city's already in the process of moving through the NOI. NOIs can be filed well ahead of when quiet zones get established. FRA's guidance at this point is you really should give yourself at least four to six months because our corridor has different challenges. As the commissioner mentioned, we have different challenges in our corridor and a different history of incidents than other places. And so, we are in the right timeframe, if you will, to get quiet zones established as quickly as possible because that's the other thing that we hear often when we're out working with the public. So again, with respect to Brightline's Phase Two work, there are quiet zones in motion, if you will, along the balance of the corridor from 15th Street North to 23rd. The Palm Beach TPA, again, provides the Planning Council's assistance to local governments to chat with community groups if that's a need, or work with staffs to help them get through that process. One thing to mention, and FRA has been very clear on this point, is that there are continuing obligations for public authorities once a quiet zone gets established. And so the process enables local governments to establish a quiet zone. And then, the local government or the public authority, and I'll use local government for that instance, the local government then has to affirm conditions on the corridor. There's what's called an affirmation process, also in the Code of Federal Regulations. And what that means is the public authority is supposed to go out and take a look at the corridor at least every three years. But FRA has suggested we should really be doing that on an annual basis at a minimum. So kind of look at conditions, understand if there've been any incidents, what are the factors that contributed to an incident? Is there a need for additional infrastructure? And if so, get a plan in place to get that infrastructure established. It includes taking a record of what the average annual daily traffic is, the AADT, because I know you're looking for acronyms in this presentation, and I have many of them. And so, what's the traffic count? How many school buses cross? How many trucks cross the corridor? Have there been a history of incidents? If there are, what are the things we should do to prevent that going forward? So again, that's required every three years. FRA has definitely shifted to a position where they've said, we should really be doing that at least on an annual basis for public authorities. The other thing to mention is that the FRA, in its sole discretion, can review a quiet zone at any point in time if the agency thinks a review is necessary. So for example, in Broward County, which has had a higher number of fatalities versus other quiet zones in the country, the Broward County quiet zone is moving towards the point where it may go under review by FRA. And that puts us in a different position. There's a need to kind of do a much deeper evaluation of conditions and identify if there are additional safety measures, what can those be? And so that exists kind of over time. So that's another thing to point out. Once a quiet zone's established, it doesn't mean it's established in concrete for the rest of time, but there's a continuing iterative relationship with the federal agency, with the railroads, and with the public authorities to make sure that those conditions are appropriate for a quiet zone to continue going forward. The council has been doing lots of inter-agency coordination because that's how we have the most appropriate quiet zones. And so pictured on this slide are the logos of the different agencies. The Federal Railroad Administration, of course, has offices in DC. There's also a local inspector, local railroad inspector, who's now based in the region, which is great. And Rory Newton is his name. I actually have his contact information at the tail end, just so you have that information ready if need be. And Rory's been doing one-on-one work, if you will, with local governments through the process. And we're also coordinating, of course, with the Department of Transportation, FDOT, both in Tallahassee and the local offices. The RTA has been a great resource because they've had quiet zones on the CSX corridor for more than 10 years. In addition, FECR and Brightline, of course, in that coordination loop, along with Palm Beach TPA. We've been doing lots of technical training for local government staff. In fact, thank you, City of West Palm Beach, for hosting so many of those training sessions in this room. And so, we've had FRA down a number of times to provide technical training on quiet zones, to work with local governments, to do diagnostic field reviews. FRA has also focused on this region in particular for lots of outreach with respect to trespasser mitigation because we have lots of trespassing conditions. It's really hard for us in the region because we have a condition where the traveling public is used to big, slow freight trains moving on the corridor. And we're still in this very painful evolutionary stage of realizing that that's not the condition on that corridor anymore. It's still private property. We're still not supposed to be in the corridor. But the patterns that we had fallen into as a public clearly are patterns that aren't appropriate with the number of trains that are moving on the corridor. And so, in addition to trespasser mitigation, FRA is also ramping up its efforts for community outreach, for community education programs. There is lots of funding available to assist local governments in that venture, and I'll touch on that in just a moment. With respect to schedule, again, I do lots of outreach in local governments, and the question is typically, how soon is my quiet zone going to be established? And I say, as quickly as possible. This slide illustrates the schedule we're in now. And so, Brightline is in the process of working through its construction schedule. They've indicated they should be completed sometime in 2023. Let's presume that's maybe first quarter-ish. I don't know that, but I'll just use that as, you know, kind of a reference point. So FRA is going to complete its, rather, Brightline will complete its construction. And then, they're going to run what's called a simulated schedule. So FRA will be in the region, along the corridor. And after all the construction is done, Brightline is going to start running a simulated schedule for a period of time. That'll have FRA inspectors out there making sure all the gates work the way they're supposed to, all the lights work, what's traffic doing as a result of that. One of the reminders we always provide in every setting, and so I'll take the license to do that in this one, when the lights start blinking on a gate, what is the message to drivers? The answer is not speed up, and that is unfortunately what most drivers do. But when the light is illuminated on the gate, that's a red light. So if you speed up, you're actually running a red light at that point in time. And once the gate starts falling, you're running a redder light. And so, that simulated schedule is really necessary to give FRA and local governments a chance to be out there, to issue warnings if needed, to say, guys, you know, this is a, this is a red light condition. And so, that simulated schedule will be running for a period of time. I mean, I would imagine it will be at least a few weeks of simulated schedule. And after all that's done, then FRA is going to certify the corridor, okay? And say, Brightline, you are now able to begin revenue service. That'll be sometime in 2023. At that point in time, local governments can then file notices of establishment. And so even though it may look to residents, of course, that all the work is done, there's actually lots of additional work necessary in addition to finishing the construction project, kind of the messy visible part, which is happening in other parts of the corridor, then there's all the wiring and communications equipment that isn't as evident to the public. And so, Brightline is in that process, and that happens at the tail end to make sure it's all wired properly. And Central Command up in Jacksonville knows where every gate is and where every track switch is, and to have that constant surveillance of what's happening on the corridor. So this is a lengthy explanation for what I intend to be a very simple slide, but this is kind of where we are. Again, the Regional Planning Council is available to assist as you need us, and FRA is available as well to help along the way. With respect to grant funding, the infrastructure bill has yielded lots and lots of available grant funding to, for lots of different types of infrastructure projects, but train safety, railroad safety, and mobility in particular. And so, the first of those grants has been secured in the form of a RACE grant. And that was a collaborative effort between FDOT, Brightline, and FRA. So that will generate about $45 million in funding to help with trespass mitigation. So fencing and landscaping, painting what are called dynamic envelopes. So if you've traveled the corridor, particularly to the south, what you may notice as you approach a grade crossing is lots of like crisscross striping on the ground that looks really uncomfortable to drive over. It's intended to look uncomfortable to drive over. That's a dynamic envelope to let drivers know, when you're waiting, don't wait in this area. You need to wait at that line, that's the stop line, that's actually where the cars are supposed to be. So that work, some additional gates, some additional signage, and those types of things. So with respect to this $45 million grant, which is great for us to have in the region, FDOT is working through its paperwork with the feds. And then, in 2023, early next year, DOT will be working with each local government directly to make sure that the kind of infrastructure that DOT thinks is appropriate is actually what local governments want. So you'll see that dialogue. I'm sure DOT will be, at some point, providing information that will be provided at a council works, commission work session or in a commission meeting to give you that detail. And so that's great, and that's in motion. In addition to that, there is lots and lots of grant funding available for all sorts of infrastructure, community education, and outreach. In fact, there's so much grant funding available, FRA hasn't even been able to formalize some of the programs. And they've become discretionary, where you can actually write a letter, describe your project, and they're able to allocate funding. They very much want to push funding into the region for rail safety, for trespass mitigation. And so, this is kind of my closure slide. If you're interested, I included the website link for the FRA page where all the grants are available. And I know Wen and Kevin have been working furiously to identify the appropriate projects for the city and bring those dollars down. And so with that, I'll close with my contact information, along with contact info for Rory Newton, as I promised, and I always let Rory know. Expect emails and phone calls from folks after these presentations. And we're happy to provide additional information if we can be helpful, and otherwise, we'll just be supportive, kind of in the wings, okay?
Thank you, Kim, for that presentation. Quick questions, probably not for you, but more for staff. You mentioned that there's an affirmation process that the local governments must do every few years and preferably annually.
Correct.
Staff, I just need to know, have we been doing that? And what is the, is there results that the commission should see?
Mayor, that is actually in the next presentation.
Oh, really?
Perfect segue.
That's a perfect setup, wasn't it? Okay, any other questions, Commissioner President Fox?
Thank you so much for the presentation. Last week, you were also at the TPA meeting, and we talked a bit about the importance of not just the quiet zones, but the other safety elements. I know Commissioner Peruzzi was talking a lot about the importance of making sure people don't stop on the tracks. And I think it might have been your colleague that mentioned something, I think, that we were all kind of astounded at, that if you're stopped at the tracks, that the arm that goes down is actually kind of meant to swing, that there's a $1.25 pin that's holding it together, that if you're ever stuck on it, just go right through it. And I think we were all just, you know, we'd never heard anything like that. Not that that's going to stop me from going through what the price of that, but just to hear that that's actually the whole purpose of it. And so we talked a little bit about the education components. And I'm just curious if the grant that the FEC is already planning, the $45 million grant, I guess, is there any education components that the cities might be able to get from that money, or is it just for infrastructure? Because I think the education component is as important as having a quiet zone, any of these other infrastructure things, if people don't know what they're supposed to be doing, or, you know, just, you know, these other things about what to do if you get stuck on the tracks, that I think the education component is just equally as important. So I'm just curious if that's in there, or if that's something we have to apply for separately.
Right. And thanks for pointing that out. And I forgot to mention, it was a really telling conversation at the Palm Beach TPA last week because FRA was very clear, especially following the tragic incident that we had in West Palm, which is that the brakes are, the gates are designed to break away. And so, that second gate, the entry gate falls first, and then the exit gate falls later. So the exit gate falls later so that if cars are on the tracks, they can get out of the way before the gate falls. But if someone, God forbid, is stuck in the track, you drive through the gate, and the gate actually breaks away. It's designed to do that. So along those lines, that initial slug of funding is all infrastructure-focused. But in addition, your staff is going to be happy when I leave the podium so they can tell you all the things they're working on. And one of those is funding to provide community outreach and education. And West Palm's really been one of the leaders, you know, continued compliments to the city because other cities are grateful that West Palm's taken all of the initiative and, you know, employed the creativity to come up with, think train markings and, you know, a really detailed focus on how to handle grade crossings in a very urban condition. You have the most urban, the most pedestrian accessible condition, really, of anywhere in the region, and certainly anywhere in Palm Beach County. And so your staff's been doing, you know, like the cutting-edge work to identify those measures. So I probably should yield to let your staff pick up on that unless there are other questions.
Let me see if there are other questions. Commissioner Peruzzi.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for coming to the TPA and for the presentation. You know, I think it's essential that when we talk about quiet zones, that we also understand that we have to balance that with the need of keeping our citizens and residents safe. And that really, quiet zones, a lot easier to work on quiet zones once we've accomplished that, once we've, once these accidents stop, at least with the frequency that they've been occurring. And at the risk of repeating myself, I just want to take the opportunity to again say, just as I said at the TPA meeting, that we have to educate the public, not only tell them, never stop on the tracks, but also make sure that they understand that in the unfortunate event that they find themselves stopped on the tracks in between two gates, that you must find a way to get off those tracks. And if it means knocking the gate down, you knock the gate down. If you have to drive up on a curb, you drive up on the curb. It's just essential, and I likened it to fire prevention, that we prevent house fires, but we also train people to do, what to do in the event their houses catch fire, that you have an evacuation, escape plan, everyone runs out of the house and meets at the mailbox. Same thing with kids being taught about fire prevention. We tell kids never to play with matches, but we also say, stop, drop, and roll if you ever catch fire. So it's essential that we go that step beyond saying, don't stop on the tracks, to here's what you do if you do find yourself on the tracks. And thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Ford.
Just a comment, I want to say thank you again because in my district, there was a lot of misinformation and a lot of rumor spread and things that I was going back and forth with you on before you came and spoke. And I think since then, it's been quiet. You answered a lot of people's questions. You confirmed that our city has been doing what it needs to do to try to keep its residents safe and work on. And you're absolutely right. So I'm appreciative that our administration has been focusing on that and that you were able to come and, you know, spread your wealth of knowledge with the residents and with us. So thank you.
Happy to help. And if it's helpful in another district, you know, I'm certainly, I'm happy to come and provide whatever presentations that you think are beneficial. So, okay?
President Fox.
Sorry, one quick question. You mentioned that Broward, I guess, was having to re-review the quiet zones because maybe there were too many accidents. Are there times that the quiet zones get taken away?
There are. And so, that's a very pointed focus of discussion in Broward right now. So Broward has been working very closely with FRA and FDOT and Brightline to identify additional safety measures. One of the differences, and, you know, we tend to have short histories when we think about the corridor, planning in general, frankly, so, but with a longer, you know, view of history, when Brightline Phase One was constructed, there was, there was a different, of course, set of experiences with respect to having that volume of train traffic running on the corridor. And I think all of the municipalities, public authorities that establish quiet zones, used a combination of interventions, if you will. So not every single grade crossing had four quadrant gates. And the way quiet zones can be established is based on an average of the risk mitigation spread across an entire quiet zone. So if a quiet zone has 10 grade crossings, for example, and some are high-volume roads and some are low-volume roads, the rule allows public authorities to treat some of those grade crossings with, for example, four quadrant gates or medians. Those are called SSMs or supplemental safety measures. And then, there are other safety measures that, for example, three quadrant gates, maybe you don't need an exit gate on all four sides. And different types of interventions to then allow a quiet zone to be established along a corridor where not every grade crossing is treated in the same way. Broward has now identified a grant to pursue, which it's in pursuit now, to add all sorts of additional safety infrastructure to the corridor so that every single grade crossing will then have four quadrant gates. Some of them will also have medians in addition. They'll all have those dynamic envelopes I mentioned, which are the, is the additional paint on the ground. And so, that's very telling for the region, that the county has had a lot of coordination with Brightline, with FECR, with FDOT, and with FRA to come up with the most extensive set of improvements available. That said, that quiet zone is in the process of potentially going under review. When a quiet zone goes under review, FRA can, in its discretion, terminate the quiet zone, and then you have to start over. And so that becomes very tricky in a corridor where we have now a history of lots of fatalities. And so, I think we're in an evolutionary stage in understanding how we perform as a region to get the benefits of quiet zones that we need from a quality of life standpoint and the right safety conditions so that the public is made aware of the, how it needs to travel along the corridor. So it's a little bit of a tricky time for the region. I think there's lots of great collaboration. I'll suggest to you, the Regional Planning Council will be responsible for helping with that collaboration. There's lots of dialogue, and we're trying to learn. But Broward and Palm Beach, both, are very focal in FRA's mind right now with respect to how quiet zones should be established and should be managed over time. And what are the cutting-edge techniques we can use for outreach and communications? FRA, for example, I'm sorry for taking the time, but FRA has, since I'm at the mic, FRA funded, funded a safety campaign in Miami-Dade County, for example, to have the police department issue citations and warnings for folks if they were, as I mentioned, light starts blinking, it's a red light, don't go in the grade crossing. I think they issued 700 warnings and citations in three weeks. Some of them were the same driver three times. Like you didn't get it the first time. The light is red. Don't go through the grade crossing. So there's a lot of evolutionary work necessary in helping us understand how to perform appropriately as a region. And so it's kind of everyone's responsibility, the way we look at it, right? Because if your neighbor is behaving in a way that creates a problem for everyone else, well, now everyone else is dealing with that challenge. So at any rate, just some perspective on what's been happening out there.
Very good. Commissioner Peruzzi.
Thank you. Just a quick question. You had mentioned the fatalities in the region. Did I hear correctly at the TPA meeting that our corridor, that South Florida corridor, is the most dangerous or most is the most dangerous or most deadly corridor in the United States?
We have the most fatalities per length of track. We may also have the most per capita. I have, I should check those statistics. I don't want to speak out of school.
And I would assume that that's because of the the location of our tracks. They run through urban environments. You know, some of the tracks throughout the United States are more rural, and we've, we've got it going right through our downtown. And I would assume that that's, you know, a neat, a unique situation that's going to make us more vulnerable to these deadly accidents. But I think we always have to keep in mind, anytime we talk about quiet zones, that we live in the most dangerous corridor in the United States.
We do, Commissioner. And and we have backyards backing up to the tracks. And and most parts of the country don't have that. We literally have backyards that back up to the tracks. And so and so we, you know, South Florida often has to do things differently. We have different challenges as a region, and this is one of the different challenges that we have to figure out. But that that outreach and education piece, you know, we can't emphasize that enough, and and you all, elected officials, know how important that is. And so those are really the measures that are going to make the difference, I think. Because you can put, you can put all the infrastructure in place to let drivers know a train is coming. And there are some drivers that will still want to run through that grade crossing, because, man, they've got to get to work on time, or they've got to get their kids picked up, or, you know, they're running late for something. And, you know, they don't care that, you know, all of this stuff is happening. They know they have to get to the other side. So we have some, we have some challenges to work on at a personal level.
Okay. Any other, any other questions for for Kim before we hear from our city staff? Okay. Thank you, Kim.
You're most welcome.
Again, very much. We truly appreciate it.
Hi. Good morning. Wyn Dang, Transportation Engineer. I've been supporting Kevin with Engineering Services on Quiet Zones. And so I'm going to walk through about what are the three quiet zones that the city is is in place and pursuing. Many of you may not have noticed, but we do have two railroads that runs concurrently along the I-95, and one of which is the CSX, SFRC. It was established in 2016. And a question earlier was that, have we been going through the affirmation process? And yes, short answer is yes. We recently, the last asked for affirmation that we went through for this particular corridor was about three months ago. And as we're right now, going through the affirmation process for FEC South, which is established in 2018, just when Brightline was pursuing their operations from Gregory to 15th Street. And of course, we're at FEC North. The date is TBD, because we're still going through the process, as Kim had mapped out earlier. So we have to keep in mind what, that we have three zones within the city that we are pursuing. What are the status? As you're probably thinking in the level of details from, you know, as I said earlier, that we are, we're going through the affirmation for the other two corridor that's already in place. And of course, for the FEC North, one of the things that we're, you know, we were working through as we're doing our site inventory and our site disinspection of what other safety measures that we can do, because as you probably heard, Kim said earlier, that we have SSMs on a lot of these crossings with the four quadrant gates. The only, the only crossing that we are pursuing some additional safety improvements is on 23rd Street, which they only have exit gates, right? There's only two as the vehicle's exiting. And this is in collaboration and getting advice from FRA itself. What else can we do to improve safety along this corridor? And that is to make some minor improvements to the roadway itself, and that is the the median that we're pursuing in this area. And so engineering is currently pursuing that as a dedicated project. And this is part of the process as we're establishing. So this is only one of the many things that the city is pursuing. You probably remember, in 2018, the city adopted Vision Zero policy, and, you know, has been working on the three E's, education, enforcement, and engineering. Back then, you know, it's, we're really focused on a quick build, and maybe as we're planning for the future, right? We've done a lot of public safety workshops. And then in addition to that, you probably remember C-Track Think Train. It's a little yellow emblem that was painted in a lot of grade crossing in downtown. And that was a public campaign to let people know that, hey, you know, that the train is coming, let's look up and stop looking down. We've also done a lot of education campaign with the the library itself, where we get our school kids, we educate our school kids, and they pledge to be safe around the railroads. So we we've done quite a bit of those. And of course, as we're transitioning, we're thinking about, like, what are some target enforcement and grants, which back in 2018 and 2019, we were awarded with, like, HV, High Visibility Enforcement Grants. And that comes right through FDOT, that looked at our law enforcement to look for off-duty officers to enforce in specific locations. And so here are some near-term education that the city and engineering is considering, like revamping, one of which is, as you probably remember, those signs that's on the streets is faded, right? It's been a few years. So reinitiating that. That whole campaign, that whole program costs us less than a thousand dollars in some staff time. It's it is a labor-intensive program, but it's very visible from from that aspect. We have thought about creating a safety ambassador through our neighborhood program. And I know Seth has been doing such a good job of outreach and connecting with our residents. We have a lot of safety brochure and materials. We love to share that and get that reinvigorated, get our residents to be excited about this and about passing these words along. Of course, there's also safety webinars that we did during COVID. We could always reinitiate that. And then, of course, you know, one of the things that can really help people is getting out there and getting, walking the corridor and talking about what are some things that we need to do. So the the thought is to create a series of workshops where we invite community leaders and just interest stakeholders to really walk around downtown and observe and talk about what else we can do. So to talk about near-term engineering projects that's already in the works, I know that, you know, a few years away ago, we have installed delineators. But really, this is an image from Delray Beach right there. Like, Delray and Boca have implemented delineators to separate pedestrians from the vehicle movement. And I know that has, yields a potential safety benefits for our pedestrians, especially in downtown area. Kevin has been working on Blankout signage itself. It's, it's a dynamic blank sign that is controlled by the signal, and ultimately, it has dynamic messaging for people. You know, sometimes you say, don't turn on red, or no right on red. These signs will triggers as the gate arms are coming down. So they, that is actually in the works of getting design and permitted installed on Clematis itself. Kim mentioned earlier about the dynamic envelope. Part of our planning and designing process for Banyan Boulevard itself is to install dynamic envelope on the two railroad corridor. So we know that from safety data that yields benefits. And of course, the the engineering department is actively looking for additional signage along the corridor, not just in the downtown area, but the entire corridor, whether it's stop here on red, or no right on red, is to to implement that, you know, to, and and these signage will, it's regulatory signs, right? So if you think about, like, the the police officer can't enforce unless you have signage in place. There's other signs to consider, train speed signs, right? These are warning signs. The yellow signs are warning signs. And of course, like, if you think about north of the the city itself, the train speeds are exceeding one hundred and ten miles per hour. So we need to be able to warn residents that this is a potential hazard. So these are the near-term engineering projects that's currently in place. And of course, we want to, we plan for the system, and we plan for the future. The CRA and the city have applied for a grant, and thank you so much for all you guys to support that grant for the RCI and RCP. It is a a planning study grant along the FEC corridor, the entire eight-mile corridor, to look at in addition to, right? Because FDOT have received the grants to install additional signage landscaping. But what else does the community want? And we don't know that until we do a thorough engagement process, and also a thorough, you know, maybe there are bridges, pedestrian bridges that the that the city wants to pursue. We don't know that until we go through this. But what that does, is it sets us up for other funding opportunity in the future, right? It's to have these mechanisms that allow us to receive. One of the two things that really stands out from Kim's slides earlier is the SMART grant. That's infrastructure grant for signals. So we, there's, there's a lot of things that we can do with signal, dynamic, you know, signage, or even, you know, automatic license plate reader, if we're talking, want to talk about target enforcement itself. The city also applied, this is already in the works, for Safe Streets for All. This is a Vision Zero safety grant that's in the works, and that can help us potentially fund safety education and kind of, you know, like, get our, revamp our program a little bit and making it more impactful. And so with that, I just want to give everybody here a quick update of what's everybody, the Engineering Services Department and the city has been working on for quiet zones and safety.
Thank you, Wyn, for that information. Do we have any data on how many incidents, deaths, fatalities we've had in our quiet zones since their establishment?
Sure. Part of the affirmation process is to look at crash data, not only on our, in the last five years, outside of the tragic incident in the last few weeks, we have zero that I I found, and in in the city. And I think it's, there's, there's a few reasons for that, especially along the FEC. We have a station, so trains actually slow down and stop. So the the speed within the city is is less, right? But we do not have any safety crash data, fatality data, within our quiet zones.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you so much. It's great to see what we're doing, that we are maintaining our quiet zone areas and looking for ways to improve safety. I think that it's a, it's a fine balance with making sure, of course, that these crossings are safe, but also ensuring that we do everything we can to keep the quiet zones. Because I know, as we mentioned, we're in an urban area, and many of our residents rely on that to be able to sleep through the night. So thank you so much.
President Fox?
Thank you so much, Wyn. I I have a question about the engineering, I think, part of it. Over the last week, you know, I live on Fern Street. Over the last week, I've spent a lot of time just standing at the train station, train tracks, and looking at what happens, mostly at rush hour. And I think a lot of the issue we have on Fern Street, probably on Clematis, too, is that we have more pedestrians than we ever did. On Fern Street, we now have a building right there, 360 Rosemary. So there's a four-way stop sign. If you're at Publix, like, right in front of Publix, there's a four-way stop. And so if you were going west on Fern, coming, you know, over the tracks, going west on Fern, stopping basically at Publix, at 5:30, now there's just so many people coming out of work that never were there before. And so it's very hard for cars to cross, because you're waiting for a lot of pedestrians. And so what I've noticed is that cars are blocked all the way up to the tracks. And so if the light turned green, and you were across the tracks, coming across Quadrel, and you just think you're, you know, in the flow of traffic, but now no cars are moving anywhere, because there's so many cars waiting for pedestrians to walk. It's, it's a little bit specific, but I can see now, it's, I don't know, there has to be an answer to it, because it's not going to resolve itself. And going the other way as well, that it's just that if you think you're in the flow of traffic, and then there's a lot of pedestrians, and you, the car in front of you is waiting to 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 turn, there's nowhere for you to go as well. And so it's not, I guess, something I'm trying to put you on the spot now, but I do think it's something we have to think about and solve for, because there's only more buildings and pedestrians that will be coming out of work at 5:00, trying to cross the street while cars are stopping to let them cross the street. And those tracks are not going to go away. So I guess it's just something that I'm wondering, if it's something we can continue to talk about, or if you all can maybe look at some ideas for, you know, how this, we move forward, because, you know, it is important that we have a lot of new people coming to our city, and that's so exciting. But we also have to make it safe for everybody.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, absolutely. And I think the city has made a very conscious decision to balance the walkability aspect of how we design our streets versus capacity. And especially in that particular intersections that you're referring to. Yes, we refer to Fern Street, and especially Rosemary is very pedestrianized. But we also have Quadrel, which is a state route, and that's where all the capacity, where all the vehicles are are traversing. And I think there's a couple of things that we can do. One is education, as you mentioned earlier. That's, that's very important. It's changing people's behavior. But two, is like, having, and we know where our crashes, especially in our downtown corridors are at, having targeted enforcement is very helpful, because regardless of how many signs we put up, it's really behavioral, it's human behavior that drives a lot of these, right? So if we put up a sign that says, don't turn on red, people will turn on red, or no, you know, don't make a left-hand turn out of the the parking garage. People will do it, because it's the most convenient way. So for it to function, it's, that's the whole, I guess, strategy of Vision Zero is the three E. We can't, we can't just have engineer. We have to have education and enforcement.
Commissioner Fox, that's a very good point. I think we have two different, two different issues or situations there. People going westbound, you have a four-way stop where it's not detected electronically by the signals, like at Quadrel and at Fern Street. The other one where people are going eastbound, the idea of putting stop bars, stop here on red on the west side of the tracks, to give drivers a regulatory restriction, such that they need to stop on the west side of the tracks when the light's red at Quadrel. Going westbound, that's a little bit trickier situation because of the fact that you have a stop sign. And perhaps if we were able to go after this SAFE SMART grant, we might be able to somehow integrate detection for a Blankout sign, or something to try to warn people, again, the no turn on red off of Quadrel. Whatever, whatever we can look into doing there, I think would be, obviously, we'll, we'll turn up, turn over every stone to try to find out a good solution of that. But just in the, off, off the top of my head, I think some sort of integration with a, some sort of a detection that could potentially put a Blankout sign so you don't turn right when the signal is just coming down, so that people don't do that queuing in the westbound direction. I'm not saying that's the ultimate solution, but just, I'm just trying to think ahead about what we potentially might be able to do. So that's a very good point. We will definitely look into that.
All right. So something you're sensitive to, then. Commissioner Ward, then Commissioner Lambert.
I know this isn't on the topic of, like, Brightline, but so the conversations that came out from one of the residents, or the communications when we had Kim there, was like, the freight train, and in the morning time, the extension. And and Kim had mentioned, you know, there's longer trains now, because there's more trains on the tracks, obviously. And so, and we have to move products. It's not something that we can just get rid of. But is there a discussion now, considering that there's going to be increased travel north and more trains, does that mean now our freight trains are going to continue to be longer, hauling more? Is that communication going on with the city? Because that is a common, comment I get in the morning time of that, the train stops, everyone's stuck. Unless you're going to go to Lakes and go over the overpass, you're just kind of stuck there for a while. And I've noticed it downtown, as well as in the, in the north end. Are you guys communicating with them to see if there's any ways that that can be alleviated, or we can anticipate that as part of the education?
I, I think, obviously, FPC is a private entity. They, they operate differently. And we don't have that open communications with them, especially how many cart does this freight train have, right? Because it takes actually vehicle capacity from the highway itself. So it has, it yields an overall system benefit to have it. But I, I do think that we do, we can reach out to them and see if, if there's a schedule, that we can include that as part of our communication to the residents.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I'm a big advocate for the education and engineering pieces of the three E's in Vision Zero. But even on the way to City Hall this morning, I sat at a light where, for two cycles, people blocked the intersection. And clearly, we need the enforcement piece of it as well. Now, this wasn't over the railroad tracks, but that was exactly what Commissioner Fox was describing. I'm curious how our police department interacts with this, and how we're working with them to help with the enforcement of these signage that we're adding and these rules that we have.
Take your name for the record, because we've.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Armando Fonda, Assistant City Administrator. So I'll just give you an example of where that communication is taking place. And it's not precisely for the tracks yet, but when we put additional signage, it will be. So we just instituted signage on Clematis of no trucks, no semis. And there's a couple of other examples like that. And that information, when we put those signs up, is then being shared, in this case, with the, with the EDU. But whatever officers or leadership within PD that need to enforce that, that information is being shared with them. So in that information is being shared with them, so that they share it with the, uh, officers as, as a whole to make sure that the enforcement takes place. In addition, we can, we can probably, as new signage and, and new education campaigns go forward, just have a collaborative effort with PD to maybe have an enforcement period where, like we did, uh, with the parking recently in, in Grand, I think it was Grandview Heights, where you have like a two or three-week heavy enforcement period to get the message out. So, those are the kind of things that I think there could be that collaborative effort with PD.
Any other questions, comments? All right, thank you very much, Wynne. Thank you, Kevin. Uh, now for the, uh, future attraction. Uh, we will turn to item number three, House Bill thirteen thirty-nine draft regulations. Mr. Green, are you taking the lead on this?
Yes, Mayor.
Ms. Johnson, do you want to say anything to tee this up? Are we good?
Thank you, uh, Mayor, members of the, uh, board. Uh, before Rick gets started, uh, given that we're talking about this House bill, which now is law, I've asked, uh, the city attorney to kind of tee this up, to walk the commissioners through, uh, what the law says, and then we'll turn it over to Mr. Green. So, Kimberly, if you would, please.
Very good, thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Kimberly Rothenberg from City, City Attorney. And I am here really just to talk to you about what the recent changes did and didn't do as it relates to the municipal home rule powers. So, these changes that you hear of most, um, often as House Bill thirteen thirty-nine is just one of two changes that recently occurred for Chapter one sixty-six in the Home Rule Powers Act that deals specifically with affordable housing. What it does is, and I passed out for you, um, two charts. One, one, the first one that's in your charts has, is the city's comprehensive plan as it relates to future land use. And if you see, uh, commercial and industrial is highlighted in red, that's because currently, under our comprehensive plan, you could not locate residential units in those two, um, areas and be consistent with your comprehensive plan. And when you sit as a residential board, one of your findings is that what you're approving is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The other chart that you have in front of you is a permitted use table out of the zoning regulation that identifies uses. I've highlighted some areas that developers may argue, um, could be permitted approval by the city commission based on these recent changes where it's currently also not permitted. So, what these recent changes do, the first change that you find and what the one that's referred to most often is House Bill thirteen thirty-nine, and what it did was it amended the statute that already said, notwithstanding any other provisions of law, municipality can adopt ordinances, rules, and regulations that increase the supply of affordable housing. So, they started with saying, "We may have some other statutes on the books that would otherwise preclude, preclude you from adopting ordinances, but if you adopt ordinances that are related specifically to affordable housing, you can do it." Two years later, the legislature clarified, and that was in two thousand and two, this law became effective June, um, of twenty twenty-two. It added another provision that said that in addition to allowing, uh, municipalities, the local governing body to approve affordable, uh, projects for residential with an affordable housing, um, component to it, that that, that clarified that that also allows municipalities to look at mixed use in commercial and, and in, um, industrial, so long as it also, um, has two other components with it. And that's ten percent of affordability and that the developer doesn't ask for, uh, funds that are appropriate under four twenty. That's all it does. What it doesn't do, and what's important to you and why Rick's going to talk to you, it doesn't change the fact that there are, um, land use regulations that are applicable to development in general, that are also going to be applicable to affordable or residential projects with a whole, an affordable housing component. And that just kind of lays the table for the presentation that you'll hear now.
Very good. Ms. Green?
Thank you, Mayor, and Commissioners Rick Green, Development Services Director. So, I have on the screen, while Kimberly was speaking, that is the intent. So, basically, in some cases where residential development, i.e. workforce or affordable housing, wasn't permitted, this amendment to Chapter one sixty-six now allows workforce and affordable housing and residential projects to be built in commercial and industrial uses. So, as part of the, the statute, they define what is affordable, and then they have a series of categories, extremely low income, very low, low income, moderate. Um, and for the purposes of what we have been focusing on in the city, we're using that range in downtown and other areas of the city of the sixty to one hundred percent of area median income. So, we have a series of zoning categories. So, part of the, the task that we are going to be working on is to look, to see where those could be permitted. And as Kimberly astutely pointed out, we have a permitted use table. And right now, uses one thirty-one through one thirty-six address residential uses. So, as the attorney mentioned, um, in our commercial districts, you see that we do allow today, in some cases, residential development. In other districts, we do not. And then similarly, in the industrial zoning categories of industrial light and industrial, um, we do not, with the exception of some single-family detached under certain circumstances. So, what this statute does is allow us to have these residential projects in both commercial and industrial districts. So, we have a zoning map that outlines all of the zoning categories throughout the city. And using a specific example, that's probably, uh, the best one to, to utilize in this example, is that we have been approached by the Housing Authority, Angela in specific, and I'll turn this over to her in a minute. But on Forty-Fifth Street and Military, um, you have an industrial zoning district. Uh, Get Your Bearings, you have the ballpark at the Palm Beach is here. Sam's Club is located directly to the north. Forty-Fifth Street runs east-west, Military Trail north-south. This is a predominantly industrial district. There's a vacant piece of property in here. The Housing Authority has approached us about doing a workforce housing project within this industrial corridor across the street from a commercially zoned property in red. So, we will generate regulations to address affordable and workforce housing opportunities. As the city attorney mentioned, that we do have to come up with standards and regulations. Um, we will also discuss whether incentives should be offered to developers who provide workforce housing as part of their development. The requirement is in place that in order to do it in commercial and industrial, you must have a workforce component. Um, but the city still has to address the land development regulations addressing traffic design compatibility with other uses, the infrastructure and capacity issues. And then other things that we will be addressing will be that of density, height, our zoning and land development regulations, and again, which districts this should be permitted. So, to keep in mind, um, you've got projects that are in the pipeline right now that could be impacted by this legislation. So, our own eighty-one eleven South Dixie site that we are working on with, with Flag the Realty, um, this is an example of a parcel that, again, they probably will be seeking a commercial east land use designation and a MF thirty-two zoning district. In this case, they could ask for more development. Um, The Spruce is a project proposed by Affiliated, who is building the Grand project now. Um, they are seeking an additional, um, two to, two to four floors as part of that project. Again, through this legislation, they may be able to seek additional height under that project. And then lastly, Carefree Six at Flamingo, this is a project that's going through our process right now. Uh, again, if the developer chose, not suggesting that they are, but if they chose to include a workforce housing component, um, they would be able to attain more density and more height. The extent of that density and that height is what staff will be working on at this point. So, I'll turn it over to Angela, Planning and Zoning Administrator, and she'll talk about some of the things that we've been focusing on.
Morning, Mayor, Commissioners. Angela Van, Planning and Zoning Administrator. First half, I want to talk about the areas that, um, staff was proposing not to allow any density bonus. It's not allowing the following areas. Any single-family zoning district, that's basically all of our single-family, uh, shown in basically yellow on the map. Any single-family areas, historic districts, a single-family throughout the city. Any multifamily zone historic districts, for one, because you can't tear down any structures there anyway. And most of the two districts you're seeing, uh, with the arrows are basically smaller lots and you have to culminate a lot of land in order to build. So, we're going to exclude that from this. And Curry Mix Use District because of the fact that Curry already has a height cap on it and there's really no, um, density associated with that. And of course, the downtown master plan area, who has its own, uh, affordable housing rules and regulations. First, we're looking at the multifamily, uh, proposed. Basically, staff, what staff did was we just took the existing zoning that you see here, uh, multifamily fourteen, twenty, and thirty-two, those are two, fourteen units per acre, twenty units per acre, and thirty-two units per acre. And we just doubled it as a bonus. For what we did, we just doubled it as a bonus. And then we said of that bonus, fifty percent of that bonus only will be required as workforce housing with fifty units. So, an example, just to give you an example, this is a project that was approved, uh, in pre- on presidential way. Um, they originally had a hundred ninety-one units using the workforce, and it was, uh, MF thirty-two. So, using, um, workforce housing bonus, they can get up to three hundred and eighty-two units. And of that, said city would get ninety-five restricted workforce housing units. Just to give you an example of a project that came in under FF, MF thirty-two. So, that's what you would get out of that with the density bonus. Again, they stay out the parking and stuff like that, but this, uh, for our commercial districts, um, we have several old office commercial, uh, neighborhood commercial, general commercial, and, uh, professional office residential. And again, these are getting all associated with, um, our fourteen units per acre, twenty units per acre, thirty-two units per acre. As Rick talked about, commercial east, today, you have to be east of ninety-five in order to do residential, uh, in our commercial district. So, the areas, once you get west of ninety-five, Long Okeechobee Corridor, some areas of Palm Beach, Lakes Boulevard, today, they cannot do, uh, any residential. So, you have to be just east of ninety-five. So, what staff talked about was, and again, this is another example we can give you. So, and this again, um, this is eighty-one eleven, and this is a mix use project. So, staff has used that as an example in terms of, uh, two hundred and ten units permitted today. Um, could do four hundred and twenty units, uh, that's under GC, MF thirty, thirty-two units per acre and doubling that and under the workforce housing restriction. Hundred and five of those will be restricted for workforce housing units. Again, that's just taking a simple thing, that's fifty percent of the proposed and allowing them to do something like that. And again, FAR, yeah, other things come into factor, but just strict numbers, that's what we can get out of that. And then in industrial district, again, today, we do not allow any residential in our industrial district. So, what staff is contemplating is basically a hundred percent of the density, of the, uh, density bonus, which is thirty-two units, will go all for workforce housing, uh, because of the restriction we have on industrial land, a limited amount of land we have. And again, this is the, uh, project that Housing Authority, uh, we met with them, wants to do on Forty-Fifth Street. Um, they're contemplating about forty-eight units. And what they're doing, and all of that would be basically workforce housing restrictive units, which they are doing anyway. So, they're contemplating forty units, it's just a picture of what they're proposing to do. At this time, they have not officially submitted, but this is what they want to do in, in, uh, in our industrial areas. And staff also proposed to limit certain areas where this could be used because you don't want it on a Georgia Avenue right next to some heavy industrial areas, or you don't want it off of, uh, Twenty-Fifth Street where you got hardcore industrial uses. So, we're limiting to some areas where it could be done. Mix use districts are a little difficult because mix use districts don't have density. So, they only get their incentives through height. So, what staff is looking at, as you can see, um, in Mud, Northwood Mix Use District has, um, eighty-four feet or a hundred and four feet with incentives. And you have transition districts fifty-six to eighty. Um, you have historic districts, and it goes down to, um, ex-subdistrict thirty-six feet. You have B mud, which is one and two, are both three stories at forty-four feet. And what staff is proposing to do, specifically in, in Mud, you have, um, with the incentives, they have other incentives they can do. One is affordable housing, one is provide additional open space, and they get a two additional stories. Where staff is, could replace that requirement and just do the two stories with twenty-four additional height for using, uh, the workforce housing densities bonus programs. That way, they don't have to pay money to the Northwood Historic Preservation or try to figure out how to provide additional public open space on their site in order to get incentives. They just could use the workforce housing bonus program and get the additional two stories that way. Um, and this talked about The Spruce is another development. And I believe, and Jennifer, correct me if I'm wrong, with the calculation, think they can get seventy-six additional units, if I believe, if they go up to the six or some contemplated, they may want it to go up to eight stories. And just to close out, um, staff is proposing as far as the public hearing process, uh, two public outreach meetings, um, for the code change. Has to go to planning board for review and two city commission meetings. And then the individual project will be required to review, um, have public hearings based on the location and where they are. I'm sorry. As opposed to December, January, then talking about March and April and May. That concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Um, Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Ward and Commissioner Lambert?
I genuinely think that the industrial plan that you guys have is, is, is fairly simple. And, and I guess I'm just trying to figure out how you guys came up with, other than the simplicity of it, fifty percent, um, with that discussion, like, where is that derived from? I think I had mentioned when we met, to have the, you know, other, what other cities have done, to have that comparison so that we know what else, what's been done elsewhere. But where'd you guys get the fifty percent bump up from? Um, and then I'll, I'll yield to Commissioner Lambert, but I want to come back because I've got more questions about the districts.
No, when staff looked at the fifty percent, we looked at our general areas in the city. Because again, a lot of our areas are very urban. So, we figured that the impact it would have for traffic, toward infrastructure, toward that would be fifty percent would help limit some of that development potential. And most of our areas, again, a lot of our areas we're talking about are two-lane roads and some of the infrastructure is very old. So, that's where we looked at, basically, given a fifty percent increase. It's still giving the developer something, they get additional density to build market rate as well as get additional density for affordable houses. That's how staff looked at it and came up with the fifty percent. And we did look at, and we can hand out, we look, look at, um, Jacksonville and St. Pete. Actually, um, Jacksonville does, did only amend their comp plan. It did not have anything in writing as of yet. Um, we will contact them and see. They're contemplating regulations, but they hadn't had them adopted as of yet. Uh, St. Pete was very detailed, uh, and most of their regulations were for industrial and, and commercial requirements. Didn't have anything as far as residential, because my understanding, they have something already on the books that they use, and staff will contact them and see, but they do not have anything as far as this bill. Uh, it's geared toward mostly industrial and it's geared toward, um, commercial.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you so much. I'm definitely in favor of creating some guidelines for us to, to follow, to help provide to developers and to help incentivize workforce housing. But I guess even just the three examples that you gave, eighty-one eleven, Spruce and Carefree are so different, uh, you know, where they're located in our community, in our city. And I, I guess I'm just having, this is the first time I'm seeing this, I'd like some more time to, to digest it. But having just a, a blanket a- amount over that, I don't know, it just gives me pause. Um, you did say something in passing, so I wanted to dive into this a little bit more, is that what are the, what other considerations are taken into play, into consideration when allowing that? I presume, traffic, infrastructure, parking?
Yes, they'll, what we talked about in preliminary, coming up with some, um, requirements in terms of, we have to look at, they have to do analysis on traffic, and do analysis of infrastructure. And again, depending on where you locate it, like, in the mix use districts have specific guidelines anyway as far as they have design guidelines that will be taken into account. And once we get outside of that area, we basically talked about, what's discussion of height? What's different discussions that we're still trying to have with staff? And we would look at other municipalities to come up with something that would give them a, a general framework so that it's not coming in, and then we can go from there and analyze it and then can take it to the commission for approval.
So, it would, it would have to meet all of our other expectations before we would allow it?
No, but you know, there would be some specific rights specifically for this program that we were right for them, that they would have to go in and look and go at the guidelines, and we write specific, um, criteria for them to review, yes.
Let, let me clarify something.
Let, let me clarify something, because you would, yes, you would still have to meet-
State your name for the record, please.
Armando Fana, Assistant City Administrator. You would still have to meet the, yes, the, the minimum parking requirements. All the, the underlying regulations, especially if you're already in a residential district, that's already has underlying regulations, those still apply. So, setback requirements, all those, that, that, those don't go away. Those, those underlying regulations are still applicable.
If I may, for you, Commissioner Lambert, Kimberly Rothenberg, I think that what we're, what they're trying to say is that we're, um, in the process of putting together an incentive program that's the maximum of what you can get if these other issues are also able to be fulfilled, like parking, water, inf- all of the infrastructure needs that you would need to be able to support that, not only that project, but the entire, the, the neighborhood that all of those services provide. So, it's going to be incentive up to, provided that you can still meet these other quality of life standards.
And which body will approve the actual project?
Well, as it's written in the statute, um, once the program is put in place, the project, if it has that affordable housing component, and they're using the incentives, will come to the commission for final approval, with those standards in place, so that the developer knows and the commission knows what are the requirements.
All right, so then the existing requirements, whether it's parking, infrastructure issues, will be part of that presentation to the commission?
Absolutely.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Ward?
Going back to the discussion on Enmud and B-mud, um, those are totally two separate things. And I feel like, given the fact that B-mud is now, is kind of underway, and that there's already been the ULLI presentation talking about four to five stories, then you add on two more stories. I know you mentioned that you're not looking at single-family home areas, but it's adjacent to single-family home residences. And so, my concern is, the discussion of Enmud is completely opposite of the discussion of B-mud. How do we, how do we rectify that and make sure that our single-family homes in those districts aren't going next to potentially higher and higher buildings, and completely changing the way that, when they bought, and the way that our neighborhoods look?
Well, part of the, as Kim talked about, part of that would be neighborhood compatibility requirements. We still will look at it, but it's still based on neighborhood compatibility requirements. And I agree, uh, B-mud is not as far as long as far as a lot of its, um, requirements. I know, I know the CRA is actually has somebody out there actually looking at revised regulations for B-mud. But again, that's part of the neighborhood compatibility part of it, because I think we have a project that's out there. So, staff wanted to make sure we still could put them in right now, so we have something that can try to, uh, guide the development of the, any, uh, affordable housing project on Broadway.
And if I may, Kimberly Rothenberg, again, I just wanted to point out that the most recent twenty-twenty amendment to the statute, um, was to clarify that it also applied to mixed use, but it only clarified that it applies to mixed-use, um, residential development projects that are located in commercial or industrial areas. Now, we may, as a city, make some recommendations as it relates to some of your other, um, mixed-use areas, but that's going to be part of what the, um, planning department presents to you for consideration.
President Fox?
Thank you so much. I'm not, I haven't had a lot of time to look at both the Jacksonville and St. Pete ordinances, but it looks like Jacksonville is very simple, and that maybe there's a lot more flexibility to it. I'm wondering if that, it wouldn't be better for us to move forward with, or, or can we, you know, say that we want to adopt this HB thirteen thirty-nine in our city, but not have so much detail of what has to be included or can be included? Like, I'm, I'm nervous when I see some of the examples that you put up. I haven't actually seen, um, the Carefree, what they've submitted, but I know in the past, the neighborhood was upset about the size. So, I, I'm concerned that if we're saying you can utilize this HB thirteen thirty-nine and get two additional stories, when I know that the neighborhood doesn't want that. So, are we just giving free rein to developers to think that they can, you know, that they're going to have that option based on this, when it's more, that we want more flexibility, that we can decide, I guess, as a commission, that, you know, the Spruce or something in Northwood, tho- those, those neighbors are really excited about having more development, and I know that. So, that would be one consideration, but maybe the people in else it aren't. So, I'm just nervous that we're giving developers free rein for thinking that these are the options moving forward, when we might in the end tell them that's not what, what is appropriate for that neighborhood. And so, I'm just curious if there's some kind of happy medium.
Well, one thing that we didn't mention was that we also talked about including some regulations in form of what you're adjacent to. So, if you're adjacent to a single family, you will have more restrictions, probably maybe on the height or something, and more setbacks that requires to protect the single family like we do today. If you're adjacent to multifamily, it's a little different. Adjacent to a commercial, you're a little different. So, that's one of the things that staff has talked about doing. And as far as Jacksonville, that's their comp plan. Jacksonville, that's, they amended their comp plan to put that in there. From my discussions with Palm Beach County this morning, Jacksonville has gone forth and actually written some regulations. I haven't had a chance to call them yet, to see what they put in their zoning code to see. So, but that's their comp plan, and it's stated they will amend their land development regulations and also to put it in there.
And if I can add a little bit of color to that, Kimberly Rothenberg, again, um, you are required to ha- you can't have unfettered discretion as, as a governing body, you can't adopt, lawfully adopt, an ordinance that gives you unfettered discretion with no guidelines, because that would be an invalid, uh, regulation. So, as, as Angela said, your first step is your comprehensive plan, uh, generally says, this is, this is what our rules are, what we want in the city, it's a policy. And then the land development regulations are created to support that comprehensive plan. So, that's what Angela was talking about and what makes sense here.
Armando Fana, and, and this, the particular bill we're talking about refers to the comprehensive plan changes, not the underlying regulations. I think that, that needs to be clear. The other thing is, the flexibility goes both ways, right? The more flexibility, then the developers can come up with a project that is more dense or higher height than what a neighborhood would want, because there's no underlying regulations to govern that, that puts then the, the city commission in the, in the spot of having to choose without any underlying regulations. So, it goes both ways.
Uh, Commissioner Lambert, then back to Commissioner Ward.
Thank you. Angela, as you mentioned the neighborhood compatibility requirements, are those more quantifiable, or are those discretionary?
Uh, it would be more quantifiable, I think, from a staff's perspective.
Can you give me some examples of those?
Uh, we talked about maybe some height requirements or additional setback from residential, if you're going to go up pushing, pushing the height more toward the main quarter.
So, those would be outlined specifically in the plan? Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Ward?
So, I, I understand the, the balance between giving us some flexibility, and then making things too restrictive to the point where we go through this whole process and nothing comes from it. I also want, you know, for the Spruce, well, we, we want something to go vertical in District One. And my hesitation for more and more, more and more discussions and kicking it down the road is that I want them to build. Um, and I, you know, they were ready to build at six, and then, you know, discussions from the residents, and as well as from, yeah, many conversations about, we really want affordability, we really want to see that, that came from, okay, well, let's add on two more stories and add, add on more u- affordable units. Um, I don't want us to be sitting on this to the point where it becomes almost like, oh, or, you know, can we get it done, can we get it done? I want them to get this project done. Is there any discussion about a pilot, about starting off at a pilot level and saying, let's talk about some of the ones that are, are low-hanging, that we can say, let's try this out, with the understanding that that doesn't open the floodgates to then someone coming into B-mud and wanting increased, increased height in a different situation? And is that being discussed at all?
Well, this start, discussion started with, uh, Forty-Fifth Street and housing in Palm Beach County. Where Palm Beach County Housing is where it actually started the conversation. And we talked about doing them as a pilot to see how we can get through the process, because they, I, my understanding, they have time limitations that they have to get through in order to secure their funding. So, that was the main discussion about trying to get a project and taking it through as far as pilot and see if we have to.
Let me just also add, you know, commissioners, I think part of, you know, what we're looking to get out of this discussion, you know, is where is the comfort level of the board? You know, and as we think about, uh, the Spruce in particular, uh, within your district, you know, if we were to do that as a pilot, you know, is the board comfortable with not having the regulations and guidelines in place and having to sort through that, and then deal with, uh, the input from the residents? And rather or not, that then sets, you know, a precedent for another project to want to be considered a pilot. And probably is going to be dramatically different from the Spruce or any other project, because no two projects are the same. And then what would legally they be able to get from the board? And so, those are the kinds of, you know, discussion points that we need to get input from the board.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I just want to make sure I understand what we're considering here. So, if we wanted to consider a pilot for whichever projects, are you saying that then we would be setting precedent, and we wouldn't be able to set regulations after that?
No, I'm not saying you be setting precedent. I'm saying that's where I think I would like to have the city attorney determine if that pilot sets precedent, and then the other potential projects coming behind it would be in a position to come and say, I want to be considered a pilot, and I want the board to just kind of view and approve my project without having the guidelines. And I don't have to wait until the guidelines are developed. We need to just vet through that and make certain that we all understand what direction the board is comfortable in, and then potentially, you know, those issues that the board will have to kind of, you know, address when whatever project comes before you. Do you want to wait until we get guidelines in place? Or do you want to go forward with the pilot project without guidelines, and then how we deal with and address that?
And, and I'll, I can jump in just a, a little bit. Um, as it relates to the Housing Authority project, when we say moving forward without guidelines, that's not exactly, um, what would happen. My understanding of the Housing Authority project is that, um, if it moved forward, that we would apply the guidelines that are applicable to residential at the highest level that residential is permitted. And then it would come with the standards that you would normally apply to residential. Will that work for the Spruce project? I don't know, because I'm not familiar with what is in the Spruce project, or whether or not those would be the appropriate, um, regulations to apply to that particular project. So, um, if they come in before you adopt something, we're still going to apply the appropriate standards to that particular project for you all to follow, because you can't go with none.
Just, I'm sorry, Armando Fana, let me clarify, it's the, it's the opposite. It's the, the Housing Authority project is the one that would be in an industrial area where residential's not permitted. The Spruce project is in a, in an area, in a, in a mixed-use district where residential's already permitted.
That's exactly what I meant. The, the, the Housing Authority project would come forward in the industrial district, but we would apply the standards that are applicable to residential at the highest level, the thirty-two units per acre, um, to bring that forward if it got that far and was appropriate to be approved at that time.
See, my thinking is, we, we should look at these, w- we should proceed down the path of adopting regulations. And as these projects come before us, hopefully the developers are seeing where we're going, and they would modify their proposal to be consistent with the regulations. In any event, it's got to come before, so we will have an inflection point, commissioners. If we, if we're in the process of adopting these regulations, a project comes to us, which is inconsistent with the regulations, then we will have a decision to make. Um, I, I would think, I, I think from a broader perspective, having regulations and working toward adopting regulations where it puts the development community on notice, as to what can be done and can't be done, is the appropriate way to go. So, I would say, let's continue working on coming up with a set of regulations. Um, and if there are projects that are out there that are looking to take advantage of this, 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 this statute, they should understand that these regulations we're looking at will probably be the rule of the day. And if they're smart, they would adjust their, uh, uh, I don't know if they need to adjust it. They would present something that is consistent with the regulations. But we as commissioners, and we as the legislative body, need to, I, I think, move forward with coming up with a set of regulations to adopt this statu- to, to, to enforce and implement this statute, so that we put the development world on notice as of what we are going to allow in our city.
City attorney, so that's, uh, the Spruce, that commission project, that Commissioner Ward, uh, mentioned in terms of, you know, a pilot, and certainly the Housing Authority project could be considered a pilot. But because, as you indicated, they are in two different, uh, locations, two different, uh, zoning districts, you know, and so there's going to be a marked difference in how the two are approached. And then, uh, perhaps how the, uh, public or the residents will respond.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I know we've had, um, lengthy conversation about the Spruce. I'm curious if the other two locations that you brought up as examples, the eighty-one eleven South Dixie and the Carefree, have those developers mentioned that they want to work towards this?
At this time, no.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? President Fox?
Thank you. I wonder, is there any benefit to us moving forward at the same time with these two pilots while we're working on this? Because, and it seems like, especially because the two pilots are so different, you know, sometimes you find things that you wouldn't have thought about had you not actually been working on something in real life. You know, just looking at the ideas on a screen is not the same thing as like when you get into it, and questions are coming from the project developers. And, you know, that, it seems like that's actually a good time to have pilots that are so different that we might actually be able to learn from it before putting something, um, final into writing, but just a thought.
Commissioner, the only difference, at least as I see it, and I, I, I would prefer to, to actually look, look at it, but it appears from what I'm looking at, and planning can correct me if I'm wrong, when you look at the, um, the hu- housing, the affordable housing from the Housing Authority, that when you apply the regulations to that particular project, they meet them. This appears to be that if Spruce came through and we applied the existing regulations to that project, that it would not meet them. So, it would not, um, get what you're looking for, because you, we would apply these regulations and they wouldn't be permitted. So, you need the new regulations to, um, increase the density that's permissible for workforce housing.
That we were thinking about using these regulations, the new ones, as a pilot, right, before kind of putting anything into, I thought that that was the thought about it.
So, that, I think is, yeah, I, I think that's the, the clarification that's needed. Within, in this case, you have a mixed-use district that already has regulations governing residential development, including the height, and what is allowable, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, city attorney, that, we can't just waive those. Those, those regulations and those, and those zoning, that zoning exists already. What is, what allows the, the governing board to consider is when there is no, uh, regulations or comp plan that allows for residential, like in the case of industrial and commercial. Where existing residential exists, and the zoning is there, the underlying zoning, it would have to be amended in order to-
And the land use regulations, because that's what you're talking about. You're talking about a land use regulation that you currently have in place that's applicable to that particular zoning district. That's the, that's the difference between the Spruce and, and the Housing Authorities. They're going to locate in a district where it's not permitted right now. And what this statute changes is, it says, we don't care that it's not permitted there. You can go ahead and approve it without doing a comp plan change, and without doing the, um, change to the code that would otherwise permit you to locate in industrial or, uh, allow you to locate in commercial. That's not what you have with this example. It's different.
All right, well, let, let's separate the two. I- i- is there consensus for giving staff direction to move ahead with the, um, regulations as outlined above? And then we'll look at the, I guess we'll consider the Spruce situation separately as to how we, we, we move ahead on that. But I don't want the tail wagging the dog. Commissioner Ward?
I don't know if I have consensus on, on applying the same standard for Enmud as B-mud, because we're in the process of changing B-mud, and what does that look like? Um, I, I guess I, I kind of need to understand more- I guess I kind of need to understand more what the city attorney means because the way I was reading the statute was that we do have that discretion and we can, because they included mixed-use districts within the language, that we can. So I guess I just need, not just, I looked at this, I just need a little bit more of a conversation, and this is why we have this, of what you're talking about when it comes to, say they were on the agenda and came to commission at our next commission meeting, that the statute, the House bill does not permit us to say, "Sure, yes, you can add two more." Way it is, without us implementing anything else, if they've met all other requirements within N-Mud, whether we couldn't approve that?
No, it does not. If you're saying it's allowing you to waive your existing land development regulations for this particular project, the answer is no. It doesn't preempt your land development regulations. It simply says that the zoning use for commercial or industrial.
And when I said consensus to have staff move ahead, I wasn't saying we're approving it. Staff will work on a framework and will come back to the commission for formal vote. The question is, is there enough consensus to at least have staff move in this direction? We as commissioners, it will still come to force and we'll have a chance to debate it and vote upon it. That's all I'm asking is whether there's consensus to have staff move in this direction. Doesn't mean we're approving it today. It just means that they'll prepare whatever they need to and then it will be put on the agenda and we'll debate it and we'll discuss it and we'll move ahead. That's all. Commissioner Lambert.
To help me be a little bit more comfortable with it, before it comes to commission for debate, I'd love to see, and Rick, you're always very good about this, is giving us some examples of if this were to happen here, this is what it would look like. They wouldn't be allowed to do this because of the neighborhood compatibility requirements or the traffic requirements or the parking requirements. And I just would like to see a little bit more specific numbers around that.
Certainly, we could do that. And some of the preliminary regulations that we started drafting, we didn't want to get into the details today, but there's a different height requirement to Angela's earlier point. If you're adjacent to single family, if you're adjacent to multifamily, if you're adjacent to industrial. So we'll flush those out and bring those back and we'll certainly provide examples as well.
And maybe Mr. Green or Legal, if you can meet with the commissioners and talk about, particularly Commissioner Ward, talk about the Spruce project, whether it can be done currently, can't be done currently, what impact this particular statute has on their ability to move forward so that they get comfort on that. I'm trying to get two things done. I'm trying to see if there's consensus on the regulations to move forward in that regard. That's one thing, from this group, to have you all move forward. And then have you all meet with commissioners to discuss the Spruce project in particular to see how, what, if anything, the statute, how that impacts that? If there's a way to bifurcate the two in the commissioners' minds. Commissioner Lambert.
And if we don't move forward with adopting some of these regulations, we cannot adopt these allowances for this House bill, is that correct?
If you don't adopt regulations that guide you, you're limited to following those that are already in your code.
Now, on that point, because some seem to suggest that these, that this House bill gives a blank check to developers. So elaborate upon that because I've heard that, that, "Oh, you don't need to do any regulations because the House bill says you can do anything you want to."
Correct. And that's a concern that we've raised at staff level, Mayor, is that, again, it's not an open checkbook that you can build as high as you like. You can get as many units as you want. Certainly, we have to look at, and that's why we want to enact and why Jacksonville has to enact land development regulations because you've got to look at traffic, you've got to look at neighborhood compatibility. And to your point, Commissioner, it is going to vary. We are proposing that, in essence, for multifamily, commercial and industrial, that you basically double the intensity, the density that's applicable today and then half of that increased amount would have to be, which is virtually twenty-five percent, would have to be in the form of workforce housing. But it doesn't allow a developer to go from thirty-two units to a hundred or two-hundred units an acre. We want to confine and define, to the mayor's earlier point, so there's some predictability on the developer's side. They know what the rules and regulations are so they can design a project accordingly.
And Mayor, if I may just for two seconds, I just want to kind of step back just a second and remember, under Chapter One-Sixty-Six, when the Constitution was changed to give local governments home rule power and authority to do everything that a local government needed to do unless expressly indicated by law otherwise. This law that was adopted only changes a small portion of our powers to decide what is appropriate for the city. If you construe this broadly as a blank check, you take away your own powers to decide what's appropriate for your community. And that's part of your responsibility as legislators for the city to do that. What is appropriate for the city?
And what's appropriate for the city is going to vary from neighborhood to neighborhood, right? I mean, what's appropriate in one neighborhood, as we as the local governing body, we will make the determination. It may not be appropriate in another neighborhood. I think what we're trying to do here is to come up with a set of rules and regulations that, A, provide us with that workforce housing incentive. There's no dispute on this body, I don't believe, that we have a need for workforce housing. And what this statute does is it gives us a roadmap as to how we can get there. But it doesn't mean we turn a blind eye to all other considerations that we've already adopted and historically have applied in our city, as I understand what you're saying, Madam City Attorney. So, yeah, let's see if we could come up with a set of regulations to hopefully implement the purpose of the statute, which is to enable local governments to have some flexibility when it comes to increasing the supply of affordable housing. But it is not a blank check that developers could just do any project in any neighborhood whatsoever. Can you imagine the pitchforks and knives that would show up at the Carefree said to base upon this statute, they could go up twenty-five stories? It's not going to happen. Armando.
Yes, Armando Fana. So just another clarification here. So you have MF Thirty-Two, right? It's already zoned for residential multifamily. Actually, what staff is looking at and suggesting is in order to increase our workforce housing stock, we would double that, but this Florida statute doesn't require or doesn't allow for a developer to come in and say, "Well, we want to double it." Because it's already, the underlying zoning and the regulations are already in place for that residential district. What we are suggesting is on top of the, what's the commercial and industrial, that this gives us an opportunity to rewrite some of the regulations and allow for additional densities when appropriate within a already zoned residential district. But the statute does not allow for that.
President Fox.
Thank you. I think on one of the slides it said you planned to have two community outreach meetings. Would that be, I'm just curious if you could tell us a little bit more about that? Would that be before it comes to us or what are your thoughts about how that would work?
Commissioner, I think the intent was probably before it came to you just to get some public input on the proposal. So we'd come up with a draft. It wouldn't be final, but it would be kind of a draft concept that we'd get feedback from the community and then before we brought it back to you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Lambert.
Mayor, did you say that separately we're going to discuss the Spruce and this Housing Authority project?
Yeah, I'd like for staff to be able to sit down with you. Obviously, we can't do it in a formal meeting because as it may presented to us. Commissioner, we'd certainly have staff sit down with you and meet with you and kind of talk about, you know, if there's a path forward, what impact this statute has on that path forward, et cetera.
And can I clarify? I don't remember who said it now, but is it my understanding that if we were to adopt what is proposed here today, that the Spruce project as proposed would not qualify?
No, they could qualify and there's a path for them today to get to six stories. The question is, do we want to amend the regulations to allow them to go to eight stories? And that's the analysis that we have to perform.
Could they get to eight stories if this wasn't even on the books?
They could not, ma'am. They could get to six, I believe, is the maximum right now. Using the historic preservation, there's a provision in there that could get them from four to six.
And that's the conversation I need you to have with the commissioners is to what the current landscape looks like. How that, what the current landscape is for the Spruce project, how, if at all, this particular statutory provision affects that and, you know, whether that gives them sufficient path forward. But to me, that's a separate conversation from whether we have, there's a consensus for staff to move forward adopting a set of regulations to implement this House bill. So I will repeat that question. Is there a consensus, at least, and again, this does not mean we approve it today. This just means that they're going to lay down a framework and at the appropriate time, there'll be at least two readings at city commission. There's going to be a planning board review of what they come up with and we'll debate it then. But do we give them, is there a consensus to have them moving ahead with this? Let's see, one head nodding, two head nodding, three head nodding, one kind of. Okay, so we have three of the four commissioners here. Let's move ahead and then let's also have the conversations, you all have the conversations with the commission on the Spruce project and then maybe even the Housing Authority project. I don't know if that is part of the conversation as well, but to see if there's a path forward on those. President Fox.
Can I ask one more question? I'm just curious. I know that I'm also excited about the Spruce project. I think we need the housing and I don't want things to be delayed, but is there a way that we can do these things concurrently? That we're going to assume, you know, once we start looking at what you come up with on this side, we're going to assume we're kind of moving forward and that their project can also be working under the impression that we're moving forward so that there's not a slowdown?
Yeah, I guess once, it's like I tell developers, they can submit for building permit tomorrow for a project that hasn't been approved. They do that at their own risk. You know, certainly we'll work with them, but I think they're going to need the direction as to whatever the commission ends up adopting before they can finalize their plans. But certainly we'll work with them in the interim and do a compatible review along with the changes effectuated by One-Sixty-Six.
Mayor, if I could, if I could ask the question a different way. What would it look like if that project were to come before the board, before we got the regulations in place to allow them to go the other two stories? Understanding, right now they can go four, permitted by right. They can go six if they use the historic preservation?
Correct.
If they wanted to go eight, what would that process look like in terms of them coming to the board before we get to this April-May timeframe where the board would have adopted these new regulations? Or is that even possible, that they could be considered a pilot project to come before the board for the additional two stories? Because that's really what's in play here in terms of what the regulations would allow. What does it look like?
I don't want to put our city attorney on the spot, but...
There's currently no, I mean, it would come with the proposal of eight stories and you as the commission would have to apply the existing regulations that don't permit it and it would be denied. That's what it would look like.
Okay, then I think that's what the board needs to clearly understand here as we talk about. Because I don't want to get in a situation where we're going, having one-on-one briefings with the board about a potential that is not possible when it comes before them to be able to take action on.
Okay, but as part of those one-on-one conversations, you've got to explain to the commissioners, because I'm sure the question will come up, that this House bill does not give the commissioners or this body the right to arbitrarily move it up from six to eight. Again, this goes back to the blank check argument. This House bill does not provide a blank check for developers to build at any height that they want to. So that's the part of the conversation you're going to have to have because some are interpreting the House bill to say that you don't need any regulations for implementation and execution and therefore, boom, if you want to go from six to twelve or six to eight or six to ten, you could do it pursuant to this House bill. That's the kind of conversation you've got to have with the commissioners so that they understand what this House bill really does and what it does not do.
I will meet with each commissioner individually and go through each amendment to One-Sixty-Six that's applicable to workforce housing from two thousand and one forward and fully describe and explain each amendment to that statute and the powers under it.
Commissioner Ward.
I just want to mirror your comments because that's what I've heard from attorneys in the city already and only one attorney has been like, "Well, wait a second. That's not how I read it." And so that's the huge conversation that I think that we all need to have. And it is, like, I printed it out. I was trying to read it, interpret it myself. I just think that, and, you know, I can maybe hold up, hold the conversation, but for other commissioners who are getting approached by developers who have legal representation, this is a conversation that's happening right now. My whole comment to having a potential pilot was then, again, industrial separate. Industrial seems like an easier path, but for something like the Spruce that's rearing to go, community already has said they want to go. Crab has already said, "Hey, this looks like something that could fit into our area." Does that kind of go into potentially a pilot where we would approve a manner in which they could go up to two stories where we're not waiting down the road so that, you know, we're not building? And then I'm getting more comments of, "Why aren't we building? Why aren't we building?" Or to just tell the developer, "Go with six and you already have an affordable housing component. Go with it. You already could get approved that way."
So how do you have a pilot for a project that is inconsistent with the law? I don't know how you do that. I don't know how you say, "Well, we're going to make a very, we're going to make an exception and let you do something that we otherwise couldn't approve by law." Can't do that.
So Mayor, that's exactly it. That's, where the pilot actually is somewhat appropriate would be in the other instance, in the Housing Authority, because you are now allowing, under this bill, you could approve residential and an industrial. So in that case, we would try to have the Housing Authority work within the framework that we are creating here. What's the amenities that are in the area, the footprint? But in the case of the Spruce, it's already zoned residential and those regulations are already in place. So you really, correct me if I'm wrong, you really can't have a pilot unless you change the code.
It's just a word you're using as pilot, but it would be because it's the first one of its kind that you've looked at, but it's not really a pilot because you're still going to apply rules and laws that are applicable to that development and decide whether or not it fits based on those rules and laws that are applicable.
Okay, so that's what I needed to hear so I can talk because it's a conversation that's happening regularly in my district.
And I don't doubt that there's a difference of agreement between city attorneys that represent local governments and try to hold on to our home rule authority and the developers who want to get as much as they can out of a piece of property.
Just have the conversations with the commissioners, please, one-on-one.
We will.
Okay, so we, staff, you have consensus to continue moving down this path. And there's direction for staff to meet with the commissioners one-on-one, to talk to them specifically about the Spruce project and the statute and all like that, okay? Do we have anything else? I don't have anything for, under Mayor's matters, we have anything else for the good of the order. Hearing now and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.